Roll call of Alderman.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Kinsella.
Here.
Alderwoman Pousa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dinnelman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele. Alderman Wygant.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington. Alderman Barfield.
Here.
Alderman Steele is excused. Roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay. Fire Chief Tom Poor.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitrait.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Human Resource Director Sherry Faber.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Belvo. Health and Housing Director Bob Stabeau.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Waste Water Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here. Debbie Belvo and Chief Clay are excused. Matt Iskand is here representing Chief Clay. At this time, if you're able, ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a public hearing at the beginning of this meeting. And I'm going to call Eric Schouster from Economic Development forward. He's the Assistant Director to explain the... There's two actual areas that we're officially having the public hearing for. He'll explain that, a little bit of the synopsis. We do have a court reporter present. If someone wishes to testify when they're... When we get to that portion after the group makes their presentation, we will have you step to the microphone after I recognize you. And please give and spell your names so the court reporter, if you do decide to speak, can get it properly recorded, okay? Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as the mayor said, there are two separate projects for which we're going to attempt to expand the enterprise zone. One is called the East Expansion. And it's at the corner of 161 and Fullerton Road. It's for a new moto station. It's a different concept, a little bit more expanded than their typical store. The other's the West Expansion, what we're calling the West Expansion. And it's for the Villas of Hollybrook Assisted Living and Memory Care Center at the corner of Frank Scott Parkway and South 11th Street. So those are the two projects that we're attempting to expand the zone for. And I'm going to turn it over to the two representatives from Economic Development Resources, our consultant Gene Norber and Daniel Schmidt. And they'll conduct the rest of the hearing.
Gene?
Eric, thank you. Mayor, thank you. As Eric said, a public hearing this evening concerns a proposed expansion of the Belleville Enterprise Zone. As you may recall, the city has a number of programs that it uses in its economic development efforts, enterprise zone being one of the most important and most successfully used in the city. There are two areas that constitute this expansion. Daniel Schmidt, the project manager from Economic Development Resources, who has worked closely with Mr. Schouster on this, will show for the public hearing the location of these two areas, read a number of comments into the record. And then, Mayor, as you had indicated, certainly be open for any comments that the public cares to make.
Okay.
Thank you.
Daniel?
Mayor, good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, good evening. As both Eric and Gene had already said, the amendment of enterprise zones is permissible under the Illinois Enterprise Zone Act. And part of that amendment process is conducting a public hearing. And in accordance with Section 5 of that act, the public hearing must be held in the county or municipality one time in the proposed zone area on the question of whether to add territory to the zone. What local plans, tax incentives, and other programs should be established in connection with the zone? What the boundaries of the zone should be? Public notice of such hearings shall be published in at least one newspaper of general circulation within the zone area, not more than 20 days nor less than five days before that hearing. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Belleville News-Democrat on June 25, 2018. The city will include a certified... Excuse me, a certificate of publication in the application to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. Also, a transcript of this public hearing will be recorded by a court reporter and will be included in that application to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity as required by the Enterprise Zone Act and administrative rules. If you want to turn to your left there, we'll start with the West Expansion. The existing Belleville Enterprise Zone right now is 9.79 square miles. This area proposed to be added to the zone is 11.456 acres. It's 0.0179 square miles. If this area were to be amended to the enterprise zone boundary, upon approval of the application by DCEO, that would create a 9.8079 square mile enterprise zone, which is less than the 12 square miles that we are held to. As I said before, this 11 and 1/2 acre area is currently in the city limits. It's one parcel. It's currently undeveloped. And as Eric said, it's north of South 11th Street at Frank Scott Parkway. The city requests that the enterprise zone be amended to the zone benefits, a critical component for both the development of the proposed area and can be provided to a private developer. Areas are eligible to be included in an enterprise zone under Option 1 of the DCEO application process if the area meets one of two criteria. Three of the 10 criteria set forward based on a local labor market or under the option that we're applying for immediate benefit. And that's the proposed addition provides an immediate benefit to the established enterprise zone and its residents within two years or less by creating or retaining full-time jobs, removing or correcting an impediment to economic development that exists in the established enterprise zone. We don't have that situation. Or stimulating neighborhood residential or commercial revitalization, which is what's happening in this West area. The proposed project, excuse me, was owned by the Villas of Hollybrook Living and Reflections Memory Care LLC. This development will include a 66,900-square-foot assisted living memory care community comprised of 48,900 square feet of the Villas of Hollybrook. That's the assisted living community. It's upscale housing for senior residents of over the age of 55 and a secure 18,000-square-foot Reflections Memory Care facility amounting to a private investment of approximately $8 million. There are no public projects anticipated for the expansion area. This proposed expansion is being initiated to encourage commercial and retail development activities in this portion of the city and grow the community's employment base. This proposed expansion is expected to generate approximately 60... Excuse me, 67 full-time equivalent jobs and an additional 150 construction jobs. There are zero persons currently employed within the proposed enterprise zone expansion area. And the proposed project will not reduce the current number of jobs or relocate any city residents. There are no additional incentives being explored for this project at this time. So that is the West Expansion. If you want to turn to your right, the map shows the East Expansion. Again, the existing Belleville Enterprise Zone at 9.79 square miles. Proposed expansion area for here would be 0.00888 square miles. That's 5.68 acres. If this were to be included in the enterprise zone boundary as it is now, it would create a zone of 9.79888 acres... Or, excuse me, square miles, which would be less than the 12 square miles that we're limited to. This expansion area includes two parcels, which are currently undeveloped. And it's at the corner of northwest Fullerton Road, east of State Route 161. This proposed expansion will not result in a zone more than 12 square miles. The city requests the enterprise zone be amended to the zone benefits, a critical component for both the development of the proposed area and that it can be provided to a private developer. Again, this area is eligible to be included in an existing enterprise under the Option 1 application if we meet one of the two criteria, either three of the 10 that the statute or the act sets out, or the immediate benefit, which again, we have in this case. The immediate benefit will provide the established zone and its residents within two years or less by creating or retaining full-time jobs, removing or correcting an impediment to economic development that exists in the established enterprise zone or stimulating neighborhood residential or commercial revitalization. Parcels in this proposed addition are 100% owned by Moto Inc. As we discussed before, they will develop a 5,900-square-foot convenience store and fuel station featuring a Crave kitchen and a 1,450-square-foot car wash amounting to a private investment of approximately $3.5 million. No public projects are anticipated for this expansion area at this time. The proposed expansion is being initiated to encourage commercial and retail development activities in this portion of the city and grow the community's employment base. The proposed expansion is expected to generate approximately 18 full-time equivalent jobs and an additional 25 construction jobs. Currently, there are no persons employed within this proposed enterprise zone expansion area. And the proposed project will not reduce the current number of jobs in the area and will relocate any residents. The city is currently considering TIF incentives for this project. There are no other state or federal incentives anticipated to be utilized in this development outside of the enterprise zone incentives. If both applications are approved by DCEO, the two separate expansion areas would result in a zone area of 9.81 square miles. Again, this is less than the maximum of the 12 square miles allowed for the city's enterprise zone as a single applicant.
Okay. Eric, I think, let me just clarify one thing. This Moto project, there's no additional incentives being planned for either project?
Yeah.
Okay, so I thought maybe at first, but sometimes I'm getting a little old, you know? Okay. At this time, we first open it up to the public. If anyone here this evening at this public hearing has any questions, comments, anything they'd like to put on the record, reference the two projects, the one on Frank Scott at South 11th, the other one at 161 in Fullerton. That is the only corner of those four intersections that's in the city. And for many years, we tried, but never were able to attract anybody. But now Moto's interested. Gentlemen in the back of the room, if you please come forward. And now this pertains to the... This hearing, please give your name and spell it.
Stewart, S-T-E-W-A-R-T, Laner, L-A-N-N-E-R-T. Well, I was listening to that, and it all sounds Greek to me. But I just wonder how much of the taxpayers' money are they wanting? And if it's such a good idea, why don't they just buy the land and do whatever they got to do? Instead of coming up here and acting like their court's all said and done, they're probably going to go lots of money from the city or the grant or something. That's the way these things usually work. And until this... Well, yeah, that's all I got to say about it.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else like to ask a question or make a statement? Anyone else from the council? Yes, sir.
I just have one quick question. Regarding the memory care facility, is that going to be private pay? Or is there any government, such as Medicare or Medicaid?
We've been told it's private pay. Several times in the meetings, the committee meetings you may have been in. And here, I think, when they came to the council, they... It's a private pay facility.
Okay.
So that's... That was announced on, I'd say, numerous occasions. Okay? Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, the enterprise zone makes developers eligible for a property tax incentive and a sales tax incentive, right?
Yes, the sales tax incentive is for... And it's automatic for any business in the zone. It's sales tax exemption on building materials, on certain building materials, things that are fixed to the property. So if it's furniture or things like that, that are not part of the property, part of the building, they're not eligible. So tables and chairs, for example. But building materials like lumber, HVAC, electrical plumbing, asphalt for the parking lot, roofs, windows, all those types of things, those are eligible for that exemption. And there's a process for that, that they have to go through as well. And then the property tax incentive, if it's only in the enterprise zone, so if there's no TIF overlay. So the West Expansion, for example, there is a TIF in existence there. But they're not receiving any TIF benefit on that project. And they cannot receive the enterprise zone property tax abatement. On the East Expansion, there was a TIF there, TIF number four. We closed that a couple of years ago. So they are eligible for the property tax abatement. So different from a TIF, it's an abatement. So it's just taken off the top before the bill is issued by the county. And how it works is it's 50% of the increment of the increase in value for five years. But it's only for the taxing districts that approved it before we... When we created this new zone. And I know Sinclair County did not approve that. And at the top of my head, I can't remember which other districts, which school districts are there. Most of the school districts did approve that abatement, some did not. So it won't be a full 50% of the increase for that period of time. But that is the incentive that's available there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Eric or myself or anyone here at the staff? Okay, then I'm going to officially close this public hearing. And we look forward to those two projects moving forward. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Norber, and thank you. At this time, I'm going to recognize the character word of the month. And normally, we have some high school kids here to help us. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to your right. At this time, I must open public participation for the general meeting. So is anyone in the audience this evening wishing to address the city council on any topic on the agenda or city business? Yes, sir?
Stewart Laner Belleville. I'm getting kind of tired of this, being me the only one who comes up here and putting my two cents worth in. But Union School is spending a ton of money with enough parking spaces for every student and teacher. And expensive aluminum fences. And building looks like something Frank Lloyd Wright would dream up. I talked to one of the workers, and he told me the company doing most of the work is from Missouri. What happened to buying Belleville, or at least in Illinois? Most of the employees are from Missouri. Also, I was told by someone in Belleville Education Department, most of the space is for teachers and administrators, not for students. And the streetscape on North Illinois, as far as I can tell, brought in no new businesses. Until Belleville can figure out how to keep people and businesses from leaving, raising taxes is just going to accelerate the moving. Grim Reaper is helpful in exposing corruption in city and county. Rulers Grocery Store needs help. Usually, they got more employees and customers. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation. And now we're going to go to the... Recognize the character word of the month. Citizenship. Meeting, doing your share to make your community better and being a good neighbor. Pretty good words of advice. Ladies and gentlemen, as you all know, I announced several many weeks ago that Lieutenant James Barker... Lieutenant Colonel James Barker retired. And was officially retired at the end of June. And he had left his duties back in the middle of May or something like that. And so we had announced everybody. I said that I would be accepting resumes. And I did. And we had received a few, and we had some interviews. And as I... You saw on your packet, or I sent a memo out, I think it came out on Thursday, that my recommendation to fill this appointment is Matthew S. Iskand, currently captain of the Belleville Police Department. And he would be effective tonight at midnight, 12:01. With your vote of approving my nomination, would be effective as promoted to Assistant Chief. The two positions, chief and assistant chief, are positions that are recommended by the mayor and must be ratified by the city council, have a majority approval. So at this time, I'm asking if there's someone willing to make a motion.
Make a motion.
Alderman Kinsella, second by Barfield, to approve my appointment of Matthew S. Iskand as Assistant Chief of Police, effective July 3, 2018, at 12:01 a.m. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Kinsella?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dinnelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Assistant Chief Iskand, would you come forward so I could administer the oath? If you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. When I start off and say aye, give your... Aye? Do solemnly swear.
You follow the sword.
That I will faithfully and promptly...
I will faithfully and promptly.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
My position as Assistant Chief of Police.
To perform my duties as Assistant Chief of Police.
Within and for the city of Belleville.
Within and for the city of Belleville.
In the county of Saint Clair.
In the county of Saint Clair.
And state of Illinois.
And state of Illinois.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my understanding.
And to the best of my understanding.
And I will support.
And I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the said city of Belleville.
Of the said city of Belleville.
But I'll be glad. Chief Clay wanted to be here tonight. He's been on vacation and has a house with grandkids. And actually, we took him away the last couple of days. He was in my office again today. But he wanted to make sure that you understood he had planned it overnight that I would present to you your news badge, Lieutenant Colonel of Belleville Police. And we want you to put that on proudly. And we look forward to working with you for many years to come. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I've always had your support, and I appreciate that.
You guys, come up to the ranch, wonderful. Got quite a bit of family here. Family, raise your hand, at least your status. This is his family, family, that's his work family. And we appreciate it. I appreciate all of you here. And I did feel though, you got a guy here that's going to be giving top-notch leadership for a long time, if that cares. And he's going to be working with you in a very sincere and very professional manner. So we're moving in the right direction. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we get to the regular part of the minutes of the meeting. I'd ask for a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from June 18, 2018.
Don't move.
Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Wiggington. Any additions or corrections? All in favor of receiving and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Repose. Motion carries. Claims, payroll, and dispersments. Ask for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of $1,411,237.40. And the payroll in the amount of $877,382.77. Do I hear a motion? Kinsella, second by Hazel. Discussion on the claims, payroll, dispersments. Roll call.
Kinsella?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dinnelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports from administration. I'd ask for a motion to release the settlement agreement with Michelle Brock in the amount of $4,000. This has been talked about, motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Gah. Any additional corrections, questions? Roll call.
Pousa?
Aye.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dinnelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Kinsella?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we have another request to approve a contract with Saint Clair County trustee payment account to purchase the property at 313 South 9th Street, parcel number 08-28.0-107-009, in the amount of $789.25. We've already got this process... This property in the process for demolition. Upon the advice of our attorneys, it's cheaper to go this route than to drag it all through the court for the rest of the condemnation. We're already cutting grass and everything else. So it's the wiser financial move to acquire this. So I'm asking for a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Wiggington, second by Schaefer. It's in Ward 5 to this property. So any additional questions? Questions about this purchase? Roll call.
Bitner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dinnelman?
Aye.
Gah?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Kinsella?
Aye.
Pousa?
Motion carries. Okay, we move to the next one. I'm asking for a motion to approve the purchase of the lot at 405 East Washington, the amount of $28,000 for a future parking lot. It's in the Special Service District. I went to the Special Service District Downtown Development and Redevelopment Committee meeting that Mr. Kinsella chairs and spoke to them. And they approved to provide us the funds so we could purchase this for a parking lot. So the money would not have to come from the city. The money's been approved by Downtown Redevelopment, the $28,000. And then we'll, in the future, commit to, as we can afford, to work it in next year or whatever. This is where we just had the lot. We did... The gentleman passed away just recently. And when we purchased that one, I wrote into the contract that we would... I asked him to write in that we would have first right of refusal. His executor contacted me. We got an appraisal. The appraisal, we bought that lot six years ago or something like that, for $25,000. in that we would have first right of refusal. His executor contacted me, we got an appraisal, the appraisal, we bought that lot six years ago or something like that, for $25,000. The appraiser came back because there is a concrete block building on this lot, they came back and asked $28,000. It's the same size lot, it's duplicate of what we have, our recommendation will be that we probably can have the street department take that down sometime in the future and just double the width of the parking for downtown.
I move that we purchased the lot at 405 Washington for $28,000.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Pusa. Any additions or corrections or comments? Roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wellington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Communications, we go to you.
All right. Together, separate?
Together, as a group.
These have been done before.
12A, Belleville Area Humane Society Annual Pet Parade, 10/28/2018. Request from Belleville Area Humane Society to hold their annual pet parade, Sunday, October 28, 2018, 1 p.m. to 2 p.m. Street closure request, 12:50 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. along parade route of East Lincoln Street to South Charles Street to East Main Street to High Street. Additional services requested, barricades, no parking signage, and four police officers. Belleville Main Street approved at their meeting on June 12, 2018. Belleville Area Humane Society Annual Pet Block Party, 10/28/18. Request from Belleville Area Humane Society to hold their annual pet block party, Sunday, October 28, 2018, 1 p.m. to 4 p.m. Street closure request, 11 a.m. to 5 p.m. First block of East Main from east side of 159 to west side of High Street. Additional services requested, no parking signs, barricades, electrical panels, sandbags, picnic tables, and trash toters. Belleville Main Street approved at meeting on June 12, 2018. Circle of Remembrance, Community Outreach, St. Matthew UMC Church, and Inner City Ministry request the use of Gaslight Park on Sunday, July 22, 29, August 19, 26, and September 16 and 23 of 2018, from 4 p.m. to 7 p.m. to provide free concerts. No city services requested.
Do I hear a motion to approve these three communications? Alderman Ga, second by Alderman Hazel, any discussions? All in favor of approving these three requests, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions, we have none. Resolution, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3333. Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Pusa. All in favor of reading this resolution by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
14A, Resolution 3333, a resolution requesting permission from IDAT to close Route 159 for the Labor Day Parade, Monday, September 3, 2018.
Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Dittelman. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor, signify by saying, I'm sorry, roll call.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wellington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wellington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Motion carries. I thought you were just hesitating. Do we need a motion to postpone this now? No, we're going to disturb by affirmation of, as we stated in executive session, the motion that was a possible motion, 18A2, will be brought forward in two weeks. Okay? Hearing nothing else, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Schaefer, second by Dittelman, all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in regular session, and I'd ask someone to consider making a motion to release executive session minutes that Mr. Harner is recommending.
I'm gonna ask that you consider a motion to approve and release or renew the confidentiality of the executive session minutes as set forth in the city attorney's memo, under due executive session minutes, dated July 2, 2018.
Motion by Alderman Pusa, second by Alderman Schaefer. Discussion on what he just said. Roll call.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Wygon.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wellington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no arguments this evening, unfinished business, miscellaneous and new business. Yes, sir?
Mayor, just a quick question. You know, we had the unfortunate occurrence last Thursday. Which fund did the appropriations come out of to pay overtime for and double time?
Comes out of the general fund. We don't have anything in the budget. I've said for years, I've wanted to for years, but when we went through all these drastic cuts and everything, salaries have to come out of the general fund, and we really need to, in the future, be planning for that. I wish there was a bigger rainy day fund that we need, but we've, we've gone through, so it's gonna have to come out of, we were very, you bring up a real good point right now for me to segue into this. All of our departments, the fire department made the initial calls that night, and there was many, the police department made many, the street department came out that night with several crews, Jason and I talked back and forth numerous times, and then we were out there again on Friday all day, Saturday morning, we were back out at 5 a.m., 6 a.m. in the morning with crews, because we still had streets blocked, and we had neighborhoods that fire equipment couldn't get to houses. So our crews did an excellent job, and on top of all that, they had 95-degree weather plus, heat index of over 100. So I'm very proud of them. I don't have the total dollar value yet, we haven't seen all the overtime turned in,